I got call to order, the select board meeting for September 26, 2023. Mary Ann Cooley is on Zoom. I will chair. All votes will be by roll call. And a new note taker, Susan Metropole. Susan, thank you for jumping in. Okay, the first order of business is public comment. Are there anyone, is there anyone who wants to make a public comment?
Mr. Chair, David Sherman had a mail earlier. He's on Zoom and he's placing consent.
Okay, great. You want to let him in?
And Mr. Chair, for record, Mary Ann Cooley did enter as well.
She did. Great. Thank you. Hey, Mary Ann. Anyone who's making public comment, you have three minutes. We ask that you give your name and your address. The select board does not comment on what you say, but you are free to speak for three minutes. So, Mr. Sherman, good evening.
Thank you. David Sherman, 100 Rosemary Way. And I see Kate Fitzpatrick in the room. She is aware of the issue that I'm raising, which is that at the 9/11 memorial, and Mr. Keane, I believe you were there, it was difficult to hear from many people. So I'm not saying that, you know, you necessarily heard what I heard. Oh, I see Katie King is on by Zoom too. She's also aware of this issue. At the 9/11 memorial, the prayer that was offered there was quite sectarian, to the point that, you know, my own religion would have considered it heresy for me to even say amen, which meant that I didn't. And since then, I've been in touch with Kate and also with Katie through the Human Rights Commission. And I see that there's been some discussion about the issue with the fire chief. And I'm glad for that, but I think that's only a start. I think the loop needs to be closed as far as making sure that prayers at town events are not sectarian, especially, you know, in a situation of rising hate crimes. And so to close the loop on this, I would say that there needs to be some assurance that at town events, and this includes fire department, police department events, it includes town meeting, it includes the select board, if there are invocations there as well, which so far I haven't seen, but that's okay, that the prayers will be non-sectarian. I'm an ICU nurse, and I've had the privilege of working with a number of wonderful chaplains in my life, and they're all very good at crafting prayers for those who, for all different religions and for those of no religions. And that's what I think should be the standard for the town. Thanks very much.
David, thank you very much. All right. Okay. Is there anyone else? All right, hearing done, we're gonna move on to the next item, the certificate of appreciation for John Schneider. John, would you please come up with your wife Nancy? All right, our official readers, Heidi Frail.
Thank you. This is a certificate of appreciation from the town of Needham, Massachusetts, Select Board, awarded to John Schneider in recognition of 30 years of service on the Needham Zoning Board of Appeals. Your leadership and dedication set the standard for quality work and impartiality. You have truly left your mark on the town we all call home. Thank you. Signed to this day, 26th of September, 2023.
Thank you.
It was an honor to serve all of this time. I feel like I've had some impact on how the town developed. And there've been a lot of kind words from my associates and others about my retirement. It makes it feel all worthwhile, including your comments tonight. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Wait a second, a minute, because I want to tell you, 30 years is a long time. I'm astounded how much you've volunteered in this town. It was great. It's hugely appreciated. And to Nancy, thank you for loaning your husband for us for all these many years. I know it's hard, but he was, built a great reputation. You were the foundation of the ZBA for years. And it is appreciated. The reputation of the ZB is excellent in town, thanks to you. So thank you very much. You did a great job.
I also was on the Finance Committee the year your proposition two and a half was adopted.
That's a totally pressed memory.
I was on the Finance Committee twice and the Chairman once, but it was right when everything broke loose. We really had to cut a whole lot of services in the town. And it's kind of amazing that what you've been able to preserve, working under that restriction over the last, what, must be 25 years?
I think 40.
Is it?
It flew by.
Mr. Chair, I would, this is all becoming clear, how John Schneider had became the consummate meeting runner. He was the FinCom member in Prop 2 and 1/2. Now I completely understand how you ran all those ZBA meetings with so much public comment, with so much grace. I thank you so much, John.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Heidi, John?
John. Hang on a second, I'm gonna come around.
Did I get the picture?
Oh, yeah.
That's okay.
Yes.
Y'all wanna join us?
Sure.
Director of Communications is downstairs with the NCAC right now.
So you're doing it all?
I'll sub in.
Thank you, Miles.
Okay. Next on the agenda, we have a proclamation. I'm gonna turn to Heidi Frail again. It's Hispanic Heritage Month.
Town of Needham, 2023 Hispanic Heritage Month proclamation. Whereas National Hispanic Heritage Month, known as Mesa Harencia Hispana, which was first celebrated in 1968, extends from September 15th through October 15th each year. And whereas the month is significant as it covers the anniversaries of independence for Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, Nicaragua, Mexico, and Chile. And whereas the rich heritage, arts, histories, food, music, and traditions of all 26-plus Latin American nations span an array of many distinct cultures. And whereas this month celebrates, honors, and pays tribute to all for their many contributions to our town and our society. Now therefore, be it resolved that September 15th through October 15th, be declared Hispanic Heritage Month in the town of Needham. And the Needham Select Board encourages all residents to observe this occasion as an opportunity for education and celebration. Signed to this day, 26th of September, 2023.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay. Next on the agenda, we're gonna, do we have a Louis? I'm sorry, Denise here?
She's on her way.
Okay. Sure. Want to do the EV rates?
I would do the fuel.
All right, we're gonna do fuel. Next on the agenda, it's a public hearing. An application for a fuel storage license at 360 First Avenue. Ron Gavell, Jay Steves, and Gerald Topping are coming up. Please, this is a public hearing, so the public can make comments. The meeting opens up for those. So please take a seat, all three of you. So what we have here is the 360 First Ave, that's Children's Hospital, coming up. What do you have for us?
Hi, my name's Jerry Topping. I'm the Assistant Director of Building Construction at Children's Hospital, joined by Greg Lynch, who's our construction manager, and Brian T. from BR+A, our engineer of record. Where our application in front of the board today is to store 8,000 gallons of number two diesel fuel to run our emergency generator. That gives us the capacity to run the generator for approximately two and a half days. It is not a 24/7 operation. It is an amateur surgical center. But we do want that reserve capacity in case there was difficulties getting a delivery of diesel, and if we need it, so.
Okay. And the fire chief has endorsed this application. Yes?
Our two inspectors are here to answer any questions.
Right. Do you guys want to come up? We have seats. I'll look at my colleagues. Heidi, Kathy, or Mary Ann, any questions?
Yeah, I mean, I guess I would just ask, as always, I understand, especially with medical facilities, that there's a need to keep your facility running in event of a power outage. I would just like to ask if you all have considered anything a bit cleaner than diesel? And if you have any plans to maybe diversify your backup energy or the energy that you're planning for the building in general as you move forward?
So for this particular building, so the reason why it's a diesel tank is though that we have that fuel capacity there. Gas would rely on the gas line, and we would not be a guaranteed fuel source, right? So because it is operating theaters, right, operating rooms, we need to actually have that emergency power available so that we could finish any cases that were actually on the table. As far as children's goals in general, we have a project right now with Franciscan. And you've heard of Berto in Boston, you know, net carbon zero. So we are, as an institution, moving in that direction. You know, it's good for the environment, it's good for us, right, you know, determines of care, what we do and what we burn matter. So the hospital itself is moving in that, in that direction. For this particular facility, it will use diesel. And we use diesel so that we have that power available and guaranteed. If we were to burn gas, we don't control that supply.
Sure. And will the building have any solar array?
It does not have a solar array. It actually, and Brian could talk to this. You know, our energy efficiency, we're actually receiving a few rebates from EverSource because we are so much more efficient than the standard. So we have the Stretch Energy Code in Massachusetts, and I think we bettered that by, I don't know, 20%, something around those. So we actually have triple glazing. You know, we went to an all-air solution. We did look at geothermal for this building and due to a few different factors, geology, the big one, we didn't go down that route. The issue that we have with solar on any of our buildings is just our power demand and the real estate that we actually have to put the arrays. So solar panels, they've improved over the years, but they're still only about 20% efficient. Last time I checked, maybe that's changed. But one of the issues we have is just the space to actually put an array on your facility that would actually give you the power. Then we talk about battery storage. So technology's changing, but the amount of power we consume is such that the batteries would consume the building. So we do have battery backup to start our generators and things along those lines. But the amount of power that's consumed far exceeds the ability to actually have a battery array as storage onsite.
Okay. Thank you.
So, Mary Ann, anything? All right. My question is, this is underground tank. Yes. What's your safety concern? Like, if it springs a leak on a Sunday, when do we find out that it's leaking?
So it's a double-walled tank, so it would spring a leak into the external shell.
Okay.
And that actually has alarms. So we have level alarms that would tell us if we're actually leaking. And then we have in the interstitial space between the first tank and the second tank, we have alarms in there too.
What's the tank made on?
Steel.
Steel.
Steel. Those alarms are tested monthly. It's a DFE code by the state, so.
Oh, that's good to know.
Yep.
Thank you.
Nope.
Anything else? Okay. Yes, Mary Ann?
I just wanted to make a note that this is a pretty standard kind of request. And it is a request that our inspectors deal with on a regular basis. So people should feel confident that the safety mechanisms and the inspection mechanisms are in, I would say, good shape for this kind of application. So at any rate, I just wanted to make that note.
Okay. Thank you. All right. I would welcome a motion if anyone want to make one.
Mr. Chair, I move that the Select Board vote to approve and authorize the Chair, herself, to sign a license for the Children's Hospital Corporation to install an 8,000-gallon underground diesel storage tank to serve the emergency generator on the property of 360 First Avenue, Needham.
Thank you. All right. Do we have a discussion? I guess not. Okay, let's vote. We're gonna do it by roll call. Mary Ann?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Heidi?
Aye.
And I vote yes. So we're done. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks very much, Select Board.
Thanks so much, guys.
Okay.
Thank you.
EV hearing may be a longer hearing than some other things, so maybe do the...
Let's do it.
Yep, do that one next.
Sure, okay. Next, we have a public hearing on an application for a transfer of an all-alcohol license, Latina Group LLC, DBA, Latina Kitchen Bar, transferring license to Scott McCourt, Ted Conley, and Tom Griffin. I would make a motion. What's this?
No.
Yes. Since, to extend or move this hearing to October 10th, is there such a motion?
It's a move.
Okay.
Second.
Second. I'm sorry.
She had a second.
Okay, thank you, Mary Ann. Are you going to take a vote on continuing this public hearing to Tuesday, October 10th? So, Mary Ann?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Heidi?
Aye.
And I vote yes. Yeah. Okay, so we're gonna extend, we'll continue that to the 10th. Perhaps someone wants to move the consent agenda and the appointments?
It's a move.
Okay. Is it second?
Second.
Okay. Mary Ann, we're gonna vote on the consent agenda and the appointments. How do you vote?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Heidi?
Aye.
And I vote yes. Thank you. All right, so we're moving this along. Let's do the next one, the EV hearing.
Denise's.
Oh, Denise's. This is a pleasure. Okay. Next on the agenda, we have the legislative update by Representative Denise Scarlett. Representative, please, come on up.
Thank you very much.
Always good to see you.
Always good to see you. And I heard Mary Ann's voice.
Yes. Bureaucracy Zoom.
And Miles and I are going to be a team here with the slides, but Miles, I'm just gonna leave it on the front page for a moment. Okay. So I'm gonna leave it in your good hands, Miles. Okay. So before we start, I just want to let you know, I have been on the road today. I'm meeting with early education and childcare folks all around the Commonwealth. And coming home, the discussion was about civil discourse in our communities and in our state and country. And how difficult it has been for so many, particularly local officials, in the work that they're engaged in and the way that civil discourse has deteriorated. And they said, one of the most important things you could do was to express publicly your support for local officials. So I just want to say, I want to express my respect for each and every one of you, for your courage in putting your name on the ballot, which only people who put their name on the ballot understand, and for your commitment to our town, and how deeply grateful I am for your service.
Thank you, Denise. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I actually have asked for this little bit of time to speak to you, and I know you've got a full agenda. But I wanted to share something, two things that I thought are incredibly meaningful to our community. And in these days, when it's very hard to know how people are getting information, I thought this is a way that I could do it. I wanted to share with our community that I am now the House Chair of Joint Committee on Education. Education is a major value in our community, and I'm hopeful that this is meaningful to the people that I represent. But more importantly, that they know that they can reach out to me on the many issues that concern them about education. Something I hope is equally meaningful to the community is I am the Chair of a permanent funded, two very important words in this whole discussion, Permanent Funded Commission on the Status of Individuals with Disabilities. This was language that was developed in the law enforcement reform bill, tangentially related, but the language itself stands alone. And the commission, both permanent and funded, is actually, much to my amazement, an independent state agency. And we have spent the time that I have been the Chair in all of the bureaucratic needs of setting up a state agency, but more importantly, on commissioners are appointed by people across our Commonwealth, from the governor, the Attorney General, the Secretary of State, the Treasurer's Office, the Speaker of the House, the Senate President, individuals that are leading major initiatives. And we have come together to develop an agenda of shared values. Just personally to share with you, in, I am the mother of four adults. My second child was born with developmental disabilities. In the many things and the many roads that we've traveled with that, what became clear to me, particularly becoming the Chair of the Commission, is that I only understood that avenue. I just understood that lane. There are so many individuals with disabilities with so many needs. And in the state, unfortunately, those individual groups need to compete with each other for resources. They need to compete with each other to be a legislative priority. And the goal of this commission is to unite what I call the individual planets, all dealing with their own issues, their own concern, their own language, their own needs, and to unite that into a galaxy where we can more universally address those issues. So I was hoping that would be very meaningful.
Yeah, that's one.
I briefly, because on my time with the Select Board, I seem to recall that by the time we get the information from the state, it's just about time for the town to settle down and start to do the town budget. So on Miles, on the next page, I just wanted to share with you the FY24 budget funding initiatives and in these major areas. And certainly in our community, not only is clean energy important and the incredible work that's happening in the community, but the work around mental health as well. On public education, we'll have a chance to discuss that briefly and more if you have questions. The early education and childcare, which is a major, major initiative of the legislative session this year, and of the Chair of Education, which is how I was traveling around the Commonwealth, and on public health as well. Public health, I'm a little bit more worried about. It looks like significant money. We need to do much more work to have a comprehensive cohesive public health in our Commonwealth. I am pleased to report to you that the SAFE bill, which stands for the State Action Public Health for Excellence Bill that I have worked on in pieces since 2014, sponsored the commission that was then seated, that came up with the regulations. We brought out the first version of that in weeks before the COVID emergency was declared. Found out it was good, but we weren't able to enforce that. We needed much more. I'm now bringing out the SAFE too, and it has come out of the Public Health Committee with a favorable and is moving towards a four. Certainly on the next page, you'll see on the FY24 budget policies, the preventative services, Operation House Call, which we all know is a major initiative around mental health. The Universal School Meals, which I hope every member of this community is as proud of as I am, that we have done this for the students of our Commonwealth. The work we're doing around eviction protection. And that is not an issue that is foreign to this community. It is just an issue that we don't speak about quite so much. And on the no-cost calls, dealing with our work on justice reform. So the next page is actually on the Needham Local Aid in Chapter 70. And I bring this to you, can do it more fully in the Representatives Report in early February, but I just wanted to be able to demonstrate that in the state, we are continually supporting communities, and particularly our community. You'll see that each year, we have seen an increase. The only place you don't see the increase is on Medco, which we have held stable, which has been a major initiative. And we are looking at a series of governors' overrides. And it is my hope that the House will move on overriding the governor's veto of a portion of the Medco budget. So I'm hoping we'll see more. And I would be remiss not to say that Dan Guttenkamp, the Superintendent of Schools, is extraordinary in his advocacy for Medco and what it means not only for the children that are served by the Medco program, but how it enhances and enriches the need in public schools. And you'll see the special education circuit breaker. We don't have that final number because, as you know, that's a formula. And so that still has to be worked out, and it depends on the needs of the students that are currently in the district. It has to be calculated. And in the way we move forward, that and the town and the schools receive a reimbursement on the special education circuit breaker. I do want you to know that it is fully funded, so the resources that we need should be there. And just as an aside, I want you to know that I believe that the special education circuit breaker is vital, not just to the students it serves, and not just to the schools, but to our community. So that we know that resources are available for students who need it most. And we avoid the uncivil discourse in which the community may engage in pitting the needs of special education students against the more typical students. So this is very important to me, and I am looking at this and advocating it always. And just very briefly, and there's so much big money in the budget, and this I know doesn't reflect billions of dollars, but in advocating for our community, we're certainly getting $75,000 for the Needham Housing Authority Community Center upgrades, I think is valuable to us. As you're struggling with your budget, I think it's helpful to know this. Another way that we can meet some of the issues and concerns that we value. Certainly for that, certainly for the Charles River Center, on the next page, $100,000 for accessibility adoptions, which is very interesting to me that. I'm so very proud of the building at the top of the hill, at the top of East militia Heights. But that building itself is getting oiled, and we have learned that there are needs around accessibility that we need to be looking at and make sure that we're addressing in that building. And my strong relationship with Beth Israel Deaconess Needham Hospital, I was able to get $40,000 for this behavioral health services. But this is the third year. In the first two years, I got the full amount, but it's a pilot program. And this program is, there is a Riverside person now that is actually in the Beth Israel Deaconess Needham Emergency Room, and this money helps to fund that. Because the belief of the leaders of the hospital, and my very strong belief as well, is that many of our mental health services are best served in our community if we can connect people quickly, if it's a warm handoff, which means when you come to the emergency room, you know exactly where you're going the next day, when and why, and who's going to be there, and that there's a strong connection between the hospital and these community resources. One of the things when people are struggling with mental health issues, their owner and the family, there's this immediate kind of feeling of, well, we don't know what's out there, and nothing's out there, and what are we gonna do? And that's not true in our community. It's true for us individually, because we don't think about it till we need it, right? We don't kind of research it and say, well, in case I'm ever having a terrible time, I want to know what the resources are. I think this person. I think this person helps to do this. This is a brainchild of John Fogerty and Scott Bock, who was the Executive Director of Riverside, who has since passed away. And we pitched it to the Commissioner of Mental Health. And there was no model like this in the Commonwealth. And she willingly gave her blessing to it and then we fought for the money. And we got that money. And now we are in our third year of this pilot program and across the state, they're replicating this model. So I'm very, very pleased about that. I'm thinking as the Select Board, you might be asking about the revenue picture. And Dave Davidson is here, so. So I know you're going to be thinking about this, but I want you to know the projected revenue, you know, was thirty nine point seven billion dollars and some change there. The actual revenue was thirty nine point one billion dollars. It's a big deal when you're talking about billions of dollars, right? But we are actually thirty nine million dollars with a negative budget impact than what we had anticipated. The other monies are detailed above that line. And for the off budget capital gains, that's money that's already spoken for. So we had to move that money immediately. It's our stabilization fund, it's those issues. And the way we deal with on budget capital gains and revenue shortfalls. So it's not a six hundred and five million dollar, one point five percent. We're not that far below projections, although that's what you're hearing in the press. It's actually this number, the thirty nine million. And you know, like I know, the economy is pretty volatile right now. And some months we've made that up and some months we haven't. On, as the Education Committee Chair, I have just briefly just given you a profile and people that are interested in looking at that around how, what a heavy lift it actually is, the Joint Committee on Education. And anyone who's waking up at six thirty in the morning, listening to W B Z knows that. Because somehow they're always telling me at six thirty in the morning, what the biggest issue in education is. But if you would look at this and see the areas that the Education Committee is looking at, the input that I'm getting from our community and certainly across the Commonwealth and the way we're dealing with it. The early education and childcare, if I could just take a moment on that, which matters a great deal in our community. And in our community, we don't have a high proportion of students that are subsidized for early education and childcare, certainly in the Commonwealth we do. But the need is so very great. And the truth is, only the people that were experiencing the need for early education and childcare knew how great the need was prior to COVID. And then when their little one became five or six and entered school, they forgot how great the need was. During COVID, the entire Commonwealth, and in fact, the country learned how important it was that what we saw for students' needs, what we felt for families' needs, and certainly the workforce impacts were huge, right? Because how are people going to return to the workforce if we didn't meet these early education and childcare needs? The federal government, through President Biden, poured money into early education and childcare. Poured money, right, in the Commonwealth, over a billion dollars came in to meet those needs. But it was, the money was given in the time of a crisis where they just said, just keep the programs going. Whatever you do, just keep it going because we're going to have to get people back to work and we need those programs to be there, right? And then when the president ended the COVID emergency, so did the money. Most states immediately turned their back on early education and childcare. The Commonwealth has not. The Commonwealth in this year has funded early education and childcare with over a billion dollars worth of resources. But we are saying, hold on, let's talk about access. Who's in the programs? Who's not in the programs? How do you get there? Access has a lot to do with the workforce. Where's the workforce? If you don't have the workforce, we actually have programs that have rooms and spaces and capacities. No one to be the early educator and waiting lists. No children in those rooms, big waiting list. That's happening in our Commonwealth, doing about affordability. And for me, and I would like to thank for many, many folks in our Commonwealth, is quality of services. So what is it we're really doing? If we're going to put in this kind of money, right? What is it that we're really looking for? And how are we going to be able to assess that, right? And so that is the work that I'm doing, traveling all over the Commonwealth, meeting. There are many people who are experts, who have time to come to the State House and meet with the Chair of Education. The people on the ground doing the work, right? Struggling with the issues, dealing with the challenges, seeing opportunities that may exist. Usually can't make it there. So I am going with the members of the Education Committee, the House Members and all of my staff. And we're traveling around the Commonwealth, meeting with those folks. So I want you to know, I want the people in our community to know that that work is happening. The one other thing I need people to know is in order for the Commonwealth to move ahead with this, we need a sustainable stream of revenue. We haven't identified that yet. So that's going to be a real struggle around identifying it and then getting agreement on it. So, so we're working on that. The budget initiatives related to education are on the next page. And we have, we have looked at that carefully and I can answer any questions. And then I know the question is always on session priorities. And these are session priorities and some very, very important to me. Tax relief, I expect to be voting on tomorrow. And looking at what that will mean in our Commonwealth. We hear our Governor Mara Healy constantly talking about our state needs to be competitive. And we can be competitive and we can be progressive at the same time. There's no doubt in my mind. The issues of housing that our town is wrestling with on a daily basis and work that I am committed to and engaged in, particularly around our Needham Housing Authority. And the issue around hybrid public meetings, I am the chief sponsor of the bill on hybrid public meetings and continuing that work. As I am the chief sponsor on the Healthcare Worker Safety Bill. And to all of the folks who are working in healthcare today, it is a volatile and dangerous environment. We don't like to talk about that, but it's true and we need to do better. We can do better, we can do better. And the other issues, I do have an advertisement for the Golic Press and I'm available for any questions that you might have. But I just want to thank you for the time. I just felt like, for me, for many people in our community and for me, September feels like the start of a new year. I finally had good information to bring you from the budget and I wanted to share it. So thank you for this time.
Thank you very much. Thank you especially for going to visit around the state and visiting people in the trenches.
Yes.
As you say, because right, the experts are the experts, but there's an insight by me and the people who are actually doing the work. So thank you, that's great.
Thank you, Ken.
And thanks for coming to see us.
This is my pleasure, always.
Any questions, comments?
I just, I just, as a former teacher, I just wanted to really thank you for the work that you're doing on education, pushing for the Metco funding, getting the funding for the free meals for the students to focus on mental health. It is so important and I so appreciate that and everything that you're doing for this town.
I wanted to share two things on that, Kathy. The first thing, and probably I've mentioned Dave Davidson before, but you know, he's one of my favorite people, right? I am the chief sponsor of the bill, it was called the School Efficiency Bill. It makes me like the patron saint of nuts and boats bills that a lot of people aren't interested in, right? It's always about procurement, it was about how we can get materials now and new ways that we're learning. It is one of my favorite legislative stories that we certainly can talk about at breakfast, fresco. But that too was a genesis from the town in Needham, where I met with our superintendent and said to him, you know, is there anything I can do to help? And Dan Guttenkamp and Anne Galati came back with this bill that was five years in the making, was settled at four AM on the last night of session by actually calling someone who would be helpful getting the bill finally to the floor in the Senate and saying, I'm up, you're up, wake him up. And tell him to make the call. But that bill, you know, there are many things that I've done that have actually grown out of my work right here in this community. And that was one, and I think it makes a difference. I think it makes a difference. But I wanted to say to, to your point, Kathy, the first time, the first day that I was serving in the legislature, all my family had come with me and my son was a public school teacher. And I introduced him to Speaker DeLeo, who shook his hand and said to him, thank you for your public service. And it was the first time that I even thought of teachers and educators in the public school systems engaged in public service. And I have never forgotten that moment. So to any educator who is out there, I too thank you for your public service. These are difficult times. We are going to hear difficult and I suspect terrible conversations related to the referendum coming up on M CAS, related to other issues that are before the Joint Committee on Education. And in all of those issues, I want to learn as much as I can, listen as much as I can. But I will not allow in any way for a public school teacher to be disrespected in the process. We cannot do that as a society, we just can't.
Thank you. Yes.
Denise, thank you so much for coming today. You are such a tireless advocate for Needham and for all the cities and towns in the Commonwealth and it's very much appreciated. And along Kathy's lines, I would say as a former healthcare worker, I appreciate the work that you're doing on, in that regard. And I also personally very much appreciate your manner. You talked about civility before, you're always very thoughtful to include everyone and take a very thoughtful approach to everything. And it's always, seeing you in action is always a very good reminder for me, so I appreciate it. I wonder if you could, very briefly, because I know that it's a long day for you. But I think that for myself, and I imagine for a lot of the public, sometimes when we talk about one point five billion for early education and care, it's not always clear how that one point five billion from the state translates down to Needham or any local community. And how those who might be interested in avail themselves of those funds can access them, how that process works. Do you think you could just like?
Sure, sure. So I think that when we think about that money, the one point five billion and the other monies, you know, there's other grants out there and issues, the thing that I am learning is to think in three buckets, actually. One is for the students whose early education and childcare is subsidized. These are often students from very, very low income families, children in the DCF system, children whose families are receiving TANF support, homeless children, right? So we see that population that receives services and that money is paid for by the state. There is a middle group that is the students and families, some of whom are subsidized, some of whom are on scholarship and some for whom these grants or these pilot programs may be weighing in. And then there's another population of students that aren't receiving state money and state assistance. But the early education system, the EEC Agency, the regulations, the rules, the laws, the support. The, certainly during COVID, the almost daily input into how to move forward, that kind of support from the state exists there and takes a good portion of that money as well, right? The thing that we are wrestling with, right? And so I always tell everyone, I'm the mother of four young adults. I never mention I have four grandchildren, but I have four grandchildren. And I have watched in my own family, the two families each with two little ones, both partners, working very hard, working good jobs and struggling to pay that early education and childcare bill. And I'm very mindful of that, right? And what that means to a family and how to move forward and how that impact is. So certainly during COVID, I was the Speaker DeLeo's point person on COVID for the House of Representatives and was dealing with early educators in our hometown who were struggling and didn't know really. They didn't have children in the program at the time, but they didn't know what was going to be next, right? And if their program was going to survive. So some of that one point five billion did support them because of the federal government coming in and saying, let's, let's support everybody. We need to talk about what that's going to look like going forward. And I just want to give a shout out, just as I'm talking about, although in our community, it is not a majority of the individuals served by the YMCA with the after school programs, everything. We're talking about that too, when we're talking about early education and childcare. It certainly is true for the Ys across the Commonwealth that I've been visiting in Everett, in Chelsea and Lowell. You know, that they're very dependent on that money as well. I think we're going to have to learn more, Heidi, about how it's going to look when we can decide what resources we have and in what ways we can support the families that are trying to pick up that tuition. But in what ways we can develop a workforce where early educators have, or in childcare folks, they have not enjoyed the respect that they deserve over the years. And many people seeing this as just some kind of babysitting. For, for you as a teacher, Kathy, the developmental milestones that have to be reached by a child by the age of three, right? What we see in brain development by the age of five, we should all understand that this investment is actually our future. Our, our present right now and our future moving forward. And we should try and develop an early education workforce where not only do we pay the early educators on par with the public schools, so that there's no kind of stealing this person, which, and you can't blame anyone who's going to make a jump and earn twenty thousand dollars more if they make that jump, right? But not only to do that, but to develop a career path so that that individual can continue to grow in that career path and we can strengthen the whole field. So I'm, I'm hoping that, I know this issue resonates in our town. I am hoping that that even if you do not have a student that is subsidized, that we are going to strengthen the system enough that it will benefit every child in this Commonwealth. And that we can begin to understand that maybe the population we need to look at as most needing, needs to be broadened. Right now, it's a narrow population. And I think that we are all thinking that there's a way to include more young families. But never made a promise I couldn't deliver. Thanks for the question, Heidi. Thank you. Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next, we have a public hearing on EV charging station rates. I need Dave Davidson, Charis Loestick and Cecilia up here, please. So you guys are talking about the proposed policy for EV rates. What do you have?
Mr. Chair, two things, a point, and a point of clarification. The policy is, the policy the board would be adopting. That is within the domain of the board. The board can amend, revise the policy at any time. The public hearing part of this presentation relates to the rates that would be charged for. for, um, for use of the, uh, electric vehicle charges. And what the policy does is help to identify the three types of charges, uh, charging stations that are available in town. The first are charging stations that are for town use only. They would not be available for the general public to use, nor for employees of the town to use. It's specific to, uh, town vehicles and there would be no charge. The second two are, um, charging stations that are town charging stations that are located in on town parking, uh, at town parking lots and other locations that are not town buildings. And when I say town, I also mean school.
Yep.
And, uh, and there, uh, there is the use of, uh, those charging stations. The maximum time allowed would be based upon what the parking time limits are for other vehicles in the location. For instance, if there was a charging station in the Chapel Street lot across the way from Town Hall, it has a two hour limit. So in that, and if there were to be a charging station there, the limit would be two hours. There, um, and the third area is charging stations that are at town facilities, which, uh, may be used by the general public and may be used by town employees. The, uh, charging, uh, stations would have a maximum amount of time, whether the vehicle is fully charged or not of five hours. So after five hours, the vehicle would have to move. Thankfully, most vehicles charge much quicker than that, but this is the maximum time. The proposal, uh, in terms of rates is the, um, rate of per kilowatt hour charge. And that is proposed at 25 cents per kilowatt hour. The second is a charge that would be incurred once the vehicle stops charging. Uh, that it would be charged hourly rate of $3. The primary purpose of that is to encourage turnover, to get the vehicles to move so the next vehicle can use that. There is a 30 minute grace period, uh, for that. So if one had their vehicle fully charged and they move it before 30 minutes have elapsed after the vehicle is fully charged, there would be no $3 charge. If they go into 31 minutes, there's going to be a charge of $3 for that, um, that hour. And the other, uh, proposal is that employees uh, may be able to charge their vehicle if they have their personal vehicle is an electric vehicle and they're at work, that they would not be charged the, um, the, uh, per kilowatt hour charge. But if they're, once their vehicle is charged, they would incur the $3 per hour charge. Um, should the vehicle be there more than 30 minutes, just as the general public would.
Okay.
The specifics and the research, uh, Cecilia Semcheck, uh, has done a lot of that work and certainly can assist, uh, the board in giving specifics to that. And of course, uh, the Director of Public Works, uh, who has been instrumental in ensuring, uh, long ago that we were going down this path of, uh, making electric charging stations available, primarily to begin with for town vehicles, but also expanding to look for the general public. And with all those comments, I'll refer to Director Lustig.
I don't have much to add. I will say, um, we have two chargers right now at the, um, PSEB building and, and other chargers throughout town. I would say, um, the number one comment that we get is vehicles that spend too much time on those chargers. So I think there is a demand, particularly the one, um, in the public parking lot as, um, individuals do utilize that. So I think having an instrument and a, a potential to, um, provide an incentive to make sure that people move on is really important. Um, I also think we're starting to hit more of a, a market condition where it makes sense to provide charges. Whereas prior to now, we really haven't, there hasn't been that demand that was there and we were really building up some capacity to, to, um, try to encourage people to have electric vehicles. And now that people are buying electric vehicles, that incentive may, may no longer make sense. Um, I believe having had conversations as part of the Climate Action Plan, that there will likely be some sort of goal for adding additional chargers in town. These chargers do have, um, maintenance associated with them. We're really, um, that one charger for several years, um, and we're really coming on the first year of the other chargers that were added and seeing some maintenance costs associated with them, more vandalism or other things that need to be resolved. So having, um, a funding mechanism to, um, continue to maintain those chargers as we expand our inventory will be important.
Great. Thank you. Um, this is a public hearing. Does anyone speak on this question? Otherwise, open to the board.
Um, I have a question. Um, so the, um, I see you guys did research on the per kilowatt hour or the kilowatt, the, the, the charge for the electricity itself. The $3 charge, is that something that other communities do? And do they do roughly the same price?
Yeah, so it does vary. Um, some of the communities do a dollar after, $2 after. They have a little bit less time that's free. And then it started to get a little messy as I approached, look, looking at EV charging stations within like the city of Cambridge, Somerville, Boston, because they have just regular parking fees regardless of what type of parking you're doing. So then kind of parsing those out. Um, so it was a little all over the place. Not every community does a, or at least what, from what information I could find, do they do that? But they do have limits. So they have like a four hour limit or a three hour limit. It's kind of all over.
When reviewing this, we actually had two people, um, as part of our group who own EVs personally. So that was actually part of our conversation, which was what is enough motivation to get somebody to turn it over? And yeah, we determined that $1 and $2 seemed like not quite enough. Um, that $3 seemed to be the, you know, the limit. $5 we thought was going too far at this particular, you know.
Um, may I ask?
Yeah.
Um, so thank you for putting this together. I'm a huge fan of this, uh, rate and, and the policy behind it. Um, I wonder if you can tell me, uh, the overtime fee, is that charged through ChargePoint? Is that automatic?
Yes. Okay. So the way it's set up is we can actually set it up so it will, the system knows when they've hit the charge and it will start a 30 minute clock. And I believe it will actually text the individual to let them know. So one of the things we actually set the $5 rate at, when we talked with the schools as well, because we have chargers at the schools and we want to make sure that a teacher doesn't get stuck with a charge because they had a class or something. So, um, we did talk with them to make sure that that five hour, um, worked for their staff as well. Um, and it will text them, I believe, at least once, if not multiple times to remove their vehicle. And the same thing when it hits the five hours, it will text them as well.
Okay. Um, I have a couple of the things. Um, one is that I'm, I'm, I love the distinctions on where, where and how people can park and charge. Um, I would hope that, uh, signs placed at those locations would detail kind of who and how they can charge. Particularly, I think just because it's confusing, the, um, the parking at town buildings, I think it, it would be great to just make sure that it is labeled that it, this is a community charger placed at a town building, you know, just so that people understand that they can use it. And, um, then I wonder, uh, just because electric car driver myself, I have run into this, um, when people are charging at work, um, I, I just want to throw out there that if you consider four hours instead of five, that breaks the workday into two equal pieces. That way people can charge in the morning, turn over and have a second person be able to get the same number of hours into their car. Makes it easier for them to get home if that's the case. It just breaks it into a sort of more equal chunks, just a thought. Um, but thank you for making this happen.
Mary Ann, do you have?
Kevin? Yep. So I would, uh, echo Heidi's point about the four hours and four hours. I, I do think it's worthwhile understanding. Because my sense was five hours felt a little bit long for being able to maximize the use for people over the course of the day. Um, Charis, I was also curious, this rate is set based on the rate of electricity, but I'm worried that we're not covering our costs of maintenance for these devices, which, for the chargers, which will clearly require maintenance, as you acknowledged. And my concern is that the fees should be in fact set somewhat higher so that maintenance costs are also uh, included as part of this or some portion of the maintenance costs are.
Sure. Um, it, it's a good point that, uh, Chair Cooley, uh, and Pro temp Chair makes. As a reminder, the rate that, uh, we're proposing, uh, at this junction is 25 cents uh, per kilowatt hour, whereas, uh, the town's cost is approximately 22 cents. So there is a premium being paid, uh, as a beginning, which in effect will, uh, also have a recognition that in, over time, there is going to be a cost of repair and maintenance. What will help guide how much we should be charging, uh, for repairs and maintenance that build into the rate will be the budget that we'll put together, which won't be coming forth until fiscal '25. And there will be another, uh, rate adjustment, uh, in time for the FY '25 season. And we can factor in what those provisions and the operating budget being made, but it is, uh, an important point.
Thank you. From myself, I was wondering, is the grace period of 30 minutes very generous? I mean, if you're waiting for someone to get pulled, like, jump off and you're waiting to get on, is it?
I think for us, we were thinking of if you're a shopper or getting your hair done or doing some sort of transactional business in the downtown. And then the same thing for employees, if they needed to free themselves up, um, providing the time to free them up. But yes, I would, I would indicate that we are being generous with that.
Okay. All right. And then I didn't understand the, um, school, town and school staff do not need to pay the kilowatt charge hours between 6:30 AM and 5:00. But why, why are we charging them after 5:00?
We just had that conversation a few minutes ago before the SLAB board meeting and we will likely be revising that to, um, extend probably, um, to midnight to cover the second shift custodial staff to make sure that all staff have equal access while they're working.
And I may add that we have public safety employees working 24 hours. So, um, that's my comment. Um, we may, uh, we may tie it to work hours in some way without specifying what they are.
No, thank you. Yeah. School teachers, you know, Paula, teachers night thing goes on.
And this again happens through ChargePoint?
It does, yes.
And Mr. Chair, just to be clear, we're, we're talking about employees being able to charge, uh, and not pay for the electricity uh, while they're working. It's not meant as an extra perk that they can, uh, park on Saturday and start charging their vehicle for free.
Okay. All right. That's a distinction. Any other questions from the audience or anyone on Zoom? This is a public hearing. All right. Thank you. This is discussion, but we're going to see you guys when?
On October 10th, uh, we would be asking the board to, uh, take a vote, uh, to public comment. Uh, Mr. Chair will be open until that time. And any additional information that the board gathers or comments to the board, uh, we would certainly weigh in, bring the final package to you on that day.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is Charis Knight. Last week was Shane Knight.
All right. And we've already in the order, we jumped out, we've done the fuel storage. DPW feasibility study, Hankav, Charis Lustig, Chainmark. Thanks for joining us. So we're talking about the, um, DPW feasibility option. Well, we, we would like to, uh, we, we gave the full presentation to you at the last meeting. And, uh, hopefully you've had time to look at it and consider the different options. I think that the staff, uh, is recommending option four. It makes a lot of sense, uh, and it's particularly because it's feasible.
Yes.
And it, um, is constructed on sites that are currently utilized by DPW functions. And in each case, it'd be a substantial improvement to the existing facility. And I'm sure that, uh, the staff would like to have it tomorrow. But, but, um, as you look at the costs with the different options, I just want to note that the, the costs that were shown to you last time are the hard costs and the footnotes are very important. In that, uh, they're probably about 25 to 30% in terms of soft costs. And then the other footnote was noting that there'll be cost escalation depending on how, how long the phasing goes out. So none of those factors were placed into that analysis. We didn't know what the fate, what the selection was and what the phasing would be.
Okay.
And that'll, that'll be the next step that we work with, uh, the DPW, DPW staff and, and the working group on.
Right.
Mr. Chair, if, um, if the board is inclined to authorize us to move forward with option four, then we'll be developing, uh, um, numbers to put in the capital plan that we'll be bringing you, uh, November, December.
Right. But you need this to start that, I understand. Do any of my colleagues have questions?
I, I did just have a question since you mentioned it. What, when you talk about the soft costs, what would that include?
Um, those are the architect and engineering costs. Those are the borrowing costs. Those are the survey costs, the printing costs, all, all of those things that are not the physical building. And typically the soft costs need to be appropriated first to do the design work, uh, to do geotechnical work to see whether geothermal heating could be possible.
I love how you're looking at me.
I think you asked that question the last time. And, uh, all those types of costs.
Um, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Um, it's so the, um, opt-in, uh, specialized code is on the warrant for the Fall Town meeting. And can you talk about the impact that that might have on this project?
It will have an impact. We've heard from different, uh, designers that, um, certain building types like schools are very different from other building types like DPW facilities. DPW facilities have very large doors and they're open a lot of time. But they don't need the same level of air conditioning, for instance, that you would have in another school. Um, we haven't gotten into that level of detail. But, uh, what we know is that at the Jack Cogswell Building, for instance, we have the capability of putting solar panels on that roof and would design the new roof to have similar facility or opportunity. Um, so I, I think that, um, the, however, we have not, uh, budgeted in the, um, the solar panels, but they would be solar ready. And, uh, I, I think we've discussed with you before the potential for a, a PPA, which stands for?
Power Purchase.
Power Purchase Agreement. Oh, yes. Right. Okay. On, on a roof like this. And in talking to Weston Sampson, that apparently is the way many other communities, um, get the solar onto the rooftops.
Um, one more thing, which is, um, when you put together your estimates for a building of, of any kind, but this one in particular, um, does it include the anticipated maintenance costs into the future? Because it, as we move into this new sort of era of, um, energy efficient buildings and then potentially, um, potentially solar panels, potentially battery storage, and then, you know, a decrease in the amount of electricity you're purchasing, um, I just wonder if the... a decrease in the amount of electricity you're purchasing. Um I just wonder if the maintenance costs moving forward are one additional item that we should consider in the overall cost.
Yeah, we do. When we um put together the capital plan and where it's being, a project's being funded, any staff that's required, the any change in the square footage that would impact um the uh energy load, they calculate all of that and it it's in there for the years that it's on.
Okay, so that's like something that, I mean, I know I've seen some estimates like that, but I didn't know if uh it if.
It's on the capital worksheets. We'll show you the next.
Yeah.
I I should point out that the Public Services Administration Building is the only public building that is geothermal in the town. And it has uh one of the lower operating costs. And certainly one of the lower maintenance costs associated with any of the public buildings in town.
Yeah.
So I think it's set ten years ago, a very good example um for what can be done in the future.
Yeah, it's it's nice to, it's a nice thing to know as we move forward into this um time when we're trying to plan for so many building, you know, giant building projects, knowing that the back end will be a little less expensive is just really worthwhile. Thank you.
Mary Ann, anything?
Um, so I certainly support going forward with option four and understanding that option better. Um, I'm just thinking about Heidi's statement about the backend will be less expensive than the current backend. I'm not sure that we know that yet. Um, I think it will be different. And I think we probably have a lot to learn still about what the new backend maintenance costs will actually be for the town uh going forward to understand the whole fiscal impact.
Thank you. And I would just also add, I think there's a good synergy between the RTS in this building. So works nicely. I think we, it's an elegant solution to a complicated problems. Thank you for doing that. Did a great job. I would entertain a motion, perhaps one of my colleagues would make one.
I move that the Select Board designate option four as the preferred design option relative to the twenty twenty three DPW feasibility study.
Second.
Okay, I'm gonna do a roll call vote. Mary Ann?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Heidi?
Aye.
Aye, vote yes. Thanks. You guys are great. Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Charis Lustig, Director of Public Works and Transportation Safety Committee.
And um if it would be all right if Justin McCullough can also join us, who is the um Chair of the uh Transportation Safety Committee as well?
Right, Justin, welcome.
Um, so I'm here on behalf of Public Works um to present two pilot options that we have for um looking at um using lining, line striping to um do traffic calming measures. And um historically in the town, we have sort of had a a standard of a twelve foot uh right of way when it's come to most of our roadways. And in the past few years, I think the thinking had been before, if it's wider, it's better because the person who's driving has more view and more of a space to operate in. But I think what they found is that it actually has the opposite effect and it causes people to not pay attention. It causes them to drive faster. And so we've been slowly working on bringing that um average um uh lane width down and uh different regulations at the state and federal level have also been looking at kind of um following the same path. So I'd say about three years ago, we started looking at more like an eleven or tw- uh ten foot lane, depending on the application. And um we've even heard of uh cities in Massachusetts who are looking at eight foot lanes. So um the Transportation Safety Committee, formerly the TMAC, had been looking at trying a pilot in Needham um of using this traffic calming measure to see if it actually has an impact on speeds. Um, they selected a road. The individuals who lived at that road were not particularly receptive to this treatment. And so um they went back out and they sort of looked at two other locations that might provide a better opportunity. Um, those locations and they that they have voted on are High Rock Street and Oak Street. Um, both of which are currently streets that are striped. Um, and one, High Rock Street, or portions of it, which have recently had a micro-surfacing treatment, are good opportunities for us to try a new line striping um technology. The problem is when you do a line striping, you can wait till it fades or you can paint over it. It never looks right. So when you have new fresh pavement, that's the perfect time to look at making a change. Um, High Rock is a much more heavily traveled road, and there's a fairly sizable lane width to work with. Um, so what they're proposing on this particular road are two nine-foot lanes with a six-foot um bike lane. Oak Street is a road that has recently been renovated by DPW in the past few years. We added granite curb um and made some roadway improvements there for pedestrian safety. Um, that particular road is a much narrower road and more of an urbanized road. And so they thought this would be another opportunity for us to pilot this in a different application. Um, this road is not wide enough to provide a legal bike lane, and I will um clarify that there was an error in the um the roadway um uh outline that you received. Um, and so uh it should have just been a three-foot shoulder on either side. It's possible someone could ride a bike in that, um but it's not intended necessarily as a legal bike lane. Um, and really, the intent of that is not necessarily to create a bike lane, but to create um a narrower road. So right now, there are no edge lines on that road. It's just one center line, and this would just be the town coming in and painting edge lines on the road. And we'll be taking um traffic counts before and after the work is done, so we can see what kind of impact it has. And as the mobility gets started, hopefully in the next month or so, um these are things that we're hoping that the Mobility Committee can learn from and create some more standardized policies to make recommendations. So I don't have to come to you for every single time we do a roadway narrowing project, and we sort of have standards in town that we would follow that are kind of the Needham expectation for the type of road and then the type of treatment we do.
Can I, can I just clarify? Um, are you? The the diagram shows a three and a half foot grass berm. Are you redoing the sidewalks there? Or does that exist currently?
On High Rock or?
Uh, this is Oak Street?
That exists exists currently.
Okay, and the same thing on High Rock?
Correct. We're not changing, we're not doing any pavement or any um treatment to the sidewalk or the berm. We're simply just doing paint with this pilot.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, interesting.
Mr. Chair, um I'm interested in how you will evaluate these pilots.
Sure, I can I can speak a lot. So what we've, um, the the DPW has the equipment to be able to do traffic type count um and speed. And so we're able to um to essentially test before we do the application of the stripes and then afterwards. And so therefore, we'll have quantitative data to suggest that the narrowing did, you know, see a a measurable increase. The literature out there indicates between a ten and fifteen to seventeen percent decrease, but we wanted to actually do quantify that ourselves, you know, because there's different applications. Um, and we'll see if there is a demonstrable measurable decrease, and that's something that that won't be a um a tool in our toolkit to be able to, you know, apply elsewhere, should we, should we have the opportunity to do so.
I may be getting way in the weeds, but like, how do you do the traffic count and speed?
The, you know, the tubes that you sometimes see around, uh you'll see the rubber tubes that go um currently, I think there's one over on um on Dedham Ave, whatever today, it's all uh essentially so by by the wheels going over the tubes, it generates a a burst of pressure and is able to do so and and able to detect, you know, the weight, et cetera, as well as the speed and count. Um, you know, and so we'll have that data that we'll do before an application of the markings and then after the application of markings. Um, and then we'll be able to see if there's a a measurable decrease, and we hope that's, you know, it's it's gonna happen and the liter- the the national literature that um that is out there has indicated that it will, so.
Does that too go across the bike lane as well?
Yeah.
And you can count the?
I don't know, and I can find that out. Um, we are looking at some new technologies, and I think we're piloting one of them as part of this project um which uses radar instead. And I know that you can do pedestrian counts and radar and um bike counts as part of that as well, so we can certainly find out how and if it detects bikes separately from.
Yeah, I mean, it'd be interesting to see with a real bike lane if there's an increase in the traffic, that's. Um, and and for this pilot, there wouldn't be any uh, what do you call them, stanchions? Like the plastic stand-up hard barriers?
Yeah, yeah. At at this point, the what the what the uh T Max slash TSC looked at is just markings right now.
Okay.
That is something that perhaps we could look at 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 some other other areas to be able to do, you know, to kind of be able to apply some controls, but this pilot, we're just looking at markings.
They're tricky in New England because of snow removal.
Yeah.
Um, and other places, they're useful. You really have to take them out in the winter, and then it doesn't provide that protection for several months of the year. Um, so trying to figure that out has kind of been a challenge. I know that cities which with chat, which have more bike lanes and more experience with this, have installed them and then have removed them because the damage is just so significant on those um stanchions.
Okay.
Great. Um. I think it's the author, oh, Mary Ann, go ahead. You want to jump in?
Thank you. Um, thank you, Karis and Justin. I'm wondering, at the end of this pilot, do we expect that we will understand if you know, a nine-foot wide lane creates typical speeds of X? So we start to have a portfolio of lane widths correlated with some speed.
We, uh, it will be not just the lane width, it will have to also be what kind of type of road, whether it's a minor collector, which you know, or or a um rural or urban road, rural road, whatever type it is, but type and count will be able to develop a data set to be able to kind of apply across the board.
And I think what I've read as far as literature goes is it's not so much the design speed, but it's a reduction in speed. So you're looking at what the speed was before and what it gets reduced down to as opposed to necessarily knowing that nine feet will give you
Yes.
twenty-five miles an hour. You'll know that if you have a road where people are on average going thirty-five miles an hour, it will reduce it down to thirty or something. So it'll give us more of a metric as opposed to necessarily design speed, but I do think we're hoping it will help us create some design standards that can then be more universally applied.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay, um, the author Jeff Fleck Speck. Thank you. He um put out there that not having a center line could reduce traffic. Are we going to, do we want to go that far? I mean, I could find it terrifying.
So I I think I've talked about it with our town engineer before, and we have concerns about that thought. Um, that is sort of the thought on some of our local roads, right? Most of our local roads don't have striping. Um, the neighborhood that had concerns about it was one of those streets, and they felt that the lack of striping, they thought caused the person to um be, you know, more aware because things could come at them. I didn't see a lot of literature that backed that up, and I think um you know, on those local roads with low volumes, it makes perfect sense, but with high speeds, I would be concerned about um crash incidences. So I think that would be a concern. Um, we did look at, the state has a road diet and the whole safe roads um uh package. Uh, taking away striping was not one of their recommended items. Um, comic, traffic calming measures such as vertical or striping um to try to narrow the road makes people feel tighter squeezed and and hopefully then reduces speeds.
Thank you. I think this is great. I'm really excited about this. Thank you for doing this. Um, any other questions? This is great. I look forward to seeing it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Justin, thank you so much. Okay, next on the agenda. You have Dedham Ave paving and marking improvements. We have Charis Lustig, again, Director of Public Works.
So this is what I'm really excited about um to present and um partially because I grew up on Dedham Avenue. So um I have a lot of experience uh with a parent who did not drive, so a lot of experience with walking and biking down Dedham Avenue. Um, we were presented with a really exciting opportunity. The state came in last year and indicated that they were doing a pavement preservation program on all of the numbered routes and that Needham had come up as being in need of pavement preservation. Um, and that would provide the town essentially free surfacing on Dedham Avenue. Um, it was very exciting for us. Unfortunately, like a lot of our roadway projects, it was ill timed in that EverSource had Dedham on a plan for a um improvement on um Dedham Ave uh between Webster and Harris. And um we obviously did not want to do that pavement and then have EverSource cut into it. So Needham discussed it with the state and the state decided um instead of doing the work for us, that they would issue us a grant in the amount that they had budgeted for the project um that they would grant to the town, and then we could um do pavement work. What, this provided us a few additional opportunities. One, it gave us more time to look at the design of roadway markings because, as I mentioned, when you have a black surface is a perfect time for you to look at how that road is striped. But it also has been on a list of a few of us um for some uh serious concerns that we have for pedestrian mobility. And it would provide us the opportunity um while we're doing this work to kind of remedy those. Um, we also have had residents um come to the Traffic Safety Committee to ask about traffic calming measures and reducing the speed. Um, I believe the Select Board voted um earlier this year to petition the state to reduce the speeds from thirty-five to thirty miles an hour, and we we were working on that right now with the state. So as part of that, we don't want to just take the speed down. We also want to do traffic calming measures, and we um you know, worked with uh one of our pre-qualified consulting firms, Fuss and O'Neil, to look at a striping road diet for Dedham Avenue as well as improving the um ramps. Right now, those ramps are non-compliant. We would be upgrading all the ramps on Dedham Ave. We would be improving the um Dedham at um Webster intersection, not major changes to the curb line, but making it compliant so we can get um accessible ramps there. And then what I'm very excited about is adding a legal sidewalk under the MBTA bridge. Um, the current sidewalk that we have there now is difficult for a pedestrian walking single file in order to get under, certainly not something that's suitable for somebody in a wheelchair or with a baby carriage. Um, and we can't even fit our sidewalk tractors down it. So our sidewalk tractors, all of which start at Dedham Ave um at four seventy, have to come off the sidewalk and then go on the sidewalk in order to get sent out around town. Um, so we had looked again at this new concept of trying to look at pavement markings, narrowing markings, and even using potentially that bridge as a traffic calming measure to try to get people to slow down on Dedham Avenue. Unfortunately, on Dedham Ave and this plan when we set out, because this was not a project that was originally on our list for having a budget item, um, we're really looking at paint at this point. We're not type changing the right of way. We're not making major changes um to how the actual street layout is. This is really just looking at sort of a topical paint pilot approach on what we can do for traffic calming. It's the first layer. It's not necessarily the only layer or the only item. But this project, as I mentioned, wasn't in our funding program and wasn't in the queue, so larger improvements like um traffic circles and um, you know, added granite curb and that sort of thing really weren't envisioned as part of this project, and there there isn't a budget for it. So I really think this is a great opportunity to start looking at traffic calming on Dedham Ave and see how successful these items are. Um, one area that comes up quite a bit is a crossing between George Aggett and Dedham Ave. And we've had mixed input from the neighborhood on that. Uh, the neighborhood unfortunately does get overrun when there are large um events at DeFazio and they don't have a parking regulation there, so um they find it very difficult to move. In fact, people have kind of gotten trapped in their driveways or had the inability um to navigate some of those um tricky uh turns in that neighborhood. So I'm not sure if there's a clear consensus if they want a crosswalk or not, but more importantly, we don't put a crosswalk where we know people are um driving very fast as a traffic calming measure. We want to calm the traffic first, and then we want to add a crosswalk. Um, so there are other layers that we can add to this and out years. Uh, but the main change is a narrowing of the traffic um lanes. We're looking at primarily a ten-foot lane um on Dedham Ave, which is a fairly um highly trafficked street. Um, we are also looking at adding a bike amenity heading um away or heading towards town center from the MBTA bridge where we have the right of way to add it. Unfortunately, we don't have enough um lane width on both sides of the road to add a bike lane in both directions. We figured uphill makes the most sense um as far as providing a dedicated bike lane on one side, and then for downhill, you would um travel um with a share-o. And really just trying to figure out how we can narrow the visual field. And then under the bridge, obviously, we're going to be tightening that up significantly um from what it currently is now to encourage traffic to slow down as they go into the bridge. Those are the main changes um that we have on Dedham Ave as part of the painted pilot. And again, we are taking traffic counts now to see what the traffic looks like, and we will um take traffic counts after the fact to see what the improvements have been.
Thank you. I spent way too much time going over these drawings this week. I find it fascinating. Do you guys have any questions? Jump on in.
Thank you, Karis. Uh, this is great as always. So appreciate all the thoughtful explanation. However, I do, I do want to say that I, while I I understand and appreciate your explanation about the two phases, slowing traffic and then putting a crosswalk. It seems to me like a wasted opportunity if we don't put a crosswalk there because that's where kids cross. And I mean, I have driven by them just this week, little kids crossing on their. And I mean, I have driven by them just this week, little kids crossing on their own, just. We need to put something there. And so it would be my preference. I understand that there is traffic moving fast. Uh, but it would still be my preference to put a sidewalk, uh, I mean, not a sidewalk, a, a, a crossing strip. If that means that we need to look at whether that neighborhood needs some parking restrictions, be happy to consider that. And I get that there can be ramifications, but I do really feel like, uh, no one, myself included frankly, is going to walk all the way down to the bridge to cross. And so we need to put the sidewalk where the people are. And I wonder if I, I hear you that there's no budget and what we're doing is painting. So I'm wondering if, um, both down at the intersection of South, with South right there, right? And then closer to wherever this crosswalk might be placed, if we can either have those paint lines like that, that get closer to each other as you approach the, the, um, crosswalk. Or if we can do those little, like, it's like a rumble, on the side, it's called a rumble strip. I don't know what it's called when you go across it in the lane. It's something that alerts people that they're coming up on a place where they need to slow down. It's always very startling and use them on the brakes. Um, maybe those are like less expensive ways that would, you know, be snowplow friendly that we could use to, to slow the traffic as well. But I think, um, to miss the opportunity is, is a missed opportunity.
Can I add to that though? I, I do think we should engage Fussin O'Neil on that because the one thing I've learned in all these years is that, um, putting a crosswalk somewhere doesn't make it safe to cross. You have to put it where it's safe. And if that, you know, if the engineer's opinion is that it's unsafe to cross there, that would be a problem. So I think we should engage a little bit more. I don't think we're wasting it because we can always keep painting, painting a crosswalk.
So I, I will add, we are adding handicap ramps on both sides of George Aggett. So it will be there to make a legal crosswalk if we were to add one in the future. Um, so that amenity is being added in. I just, I think, again, this is talking to engineers, I think the concern is, is that a crosswalk makes people think it is safe and they don't pay as much attention. So I, I completely understand where your concern is and I do see that people are crossing there. But right now they're crossing there knowing that there's no traffic protection for them and they have to be aware of the cars coming. And I think the concern would be from the traffic engineers and certainly we can discuss it further about how to make it safer in that area. Is that people will cross without looking and potentially put themselves in a, in a dangerous situation.
Is this a place that we could put on the list to get a HOC or, or?
An RFP.
RFP, yeah.
Makes a lot of sense.
First question, you, you said it'd be ten, ten-foot lanes? Is that correct?
There'll be ten.
What are they, what are they now?
Uh, they're over twelve.
They're over twelve. So this will be a pretty substantial change. And, um, yeah, I hear the, the, the back and forth on the, on the sidewalk. I, I would love to see it as a, as a goal to have one. You know, I think it's, it's a playground, you know, and playing fields and there's kids there and, you know, and, you know, maybe with the flashing light or something. I hear that just putting it there, I, I think that makes sense that it might be more dangerous than nothing if you just put down the stripes. But I, I, you know, the goal being to have a safe crossing at that place, you know, I think.
Mary Ann, any thoughts?
Um, yes, thank you, Karis. I'm glad, uh, to see this one and I know that you're excited about it. I have a couple of questions. So when I look at the drawings, they seem like they go back and forth between ten and eleven feet. Is there, what's the rationale for moving back and forth so frequently between ten and eleven feet? Not just staying with ten feet through that whole distance.
So I think it goes back to maybe that Jeff Speck concept of trying to create these pinch points to create a visual field of things coming in and causing people to slow down as opposed to getting used to one lane width of a constant, um, speed, of a constant, um, width.
Okay. It, it just seems that it happens so frequently in relatively short periods of time that, that I was trying to figure out what, what does that mean going forward? Um, things that are done in paint now, would they have the ability to have added some added surface? So I'm thinking of like the mini island pieces to create the pinch point around the entrance to DeFazio. Um, is that something that could move from paint to somewhere solid surface at some point in the future?
Yes, I think that's also part of the ideas, right? This is sort of the first phase and trying to do the traffic calming. So things that we might want to do in the future, we might want to put in granite along the entire street. That would be a traffic calming measure. We might want to do more plantings, things on the visual field. We might look at putting instants for the bike lane. So I think there are things that we could do in the future that would have, um, more of a permanent impact, uh, once we see what the pilot looks like. So I think the goal is to see, you know, in paint, how does this look? And then, you know, do we add in a torpedo island? Do we do something to provide something more permanent, um, as part of that? Um, once we've seen how the pilot is successful.
So I definitely think that, um, narrowing the lanes is important. Do we have a sense of, um, I, I understand from what you said previously in the last discussion that moving from the twelve-foot wider greater lanes to a, you know, eleven and ten-foot lane will prompt a reduction in traffic. Do we think that reduction? Do we have a sense for what that reduction might be? That creates sort of a target along there because I do think slowing people down along Dedham Avenue is definitely one of our goals.
So I believe if for every foot, there's a percentage reduction that they look at. So moving from, you know, twelve to eleven will have an impact, moving from eleven to ten will have an impact. Um, so we do believe that yes, just the simple act of narrowing the lane should have an impact on speed on Dedham Avenue. And that jump point under the bridge, I think, it's interesting, we walked the bridge, we walked the whole, um, path with the state. And people are naturally treating it like it's narrowed if you're a pedestrian on it. No one wants to be that close to a pedestrian on, um, that sidewalk. So people are sort of moving, to be frank, into the opposite lane a little bit right now in order to avoid, um, getting close to a pedestrian. That's just going to be happening permanently because we will have the granite curb and the sidewalk in place to require people to have that tightening. And that's going to create, especially like the very vis- visual narrowing of the road there, um, should create a traffic calming effect as well.
Okay. Um, I really look forward to the time when we have a much better appreciation and understanding for what the effect of narrowing these roads are, uh, over the long term. Because I feel like we're, um, you know, if we had better information, I don't know whether we would say, oh, we, we'd be willing to go to nine feet. You know, I just don't have a feel for that yet, but I'm hoping that someday we do. Um, the other thought that I had when I saw this is this is a project that to me would have been an ideal one to bring to, you know, the mobility summit for the fall. Um, and so I'm wondering if you can give us an update on what our timing is with getting the mobility committee together and thinking about starting that fall, spring summit, uh, schedule and what might be coming for that.
So I'm hoping to start the first meeting in, um, either October or early November. Um, and the plan as part of that is really to look at, right now, the capital plan as we're putting it together for this particular year, looking at the list of roads. The town has recently completed a new pavement condition index, um, which provides updated condition assessment for all of the roads in town, which helps us lead our prioritization list. Um, it also provides, um, we've also updated our sidewalk condition index, which I think we did it for the first time five years ago. Um, as we have now wrapped up doing the majority of the sidewalks in the business district and school walking routes. We now have the rest of Needham in order to address. And it's really hard to decide where in Needham we should start that process. So I'm hoping the mobility committee will be instrumental in helping us develop policies that will help figure out where to start that project. Um, and then I also think it will be on providing our current methodology and funding and our current methodology and design and getting feedback on whether or not we should maintain those programs or if we should modify them. We've sort of had a fixed number for our dollars that we've allocated for sidewalk and our dollars that we've allocated for roads as well as determining that we weren't going to add new sidewalk to the inventory. And whether or not that's something we should continue in the out years of the capital process will be something we'll be looking for feedback as well. So I anticipate the initial meetings will really be on providing education on, uh, where we are currently. So then we can get feedback and develop the, um, processes and the procedures for future years for this program.
Great. Thank you. I appreciate that.
All right. Um, yes, I think this is a huge win. I think it's, it's going to be a great project. I am amazed that you got a sidewalk under the bridge. Thank you. That's like threading a needle. So, um, yeah, have at it. This is going to be great. And we don't have to vote on this. We just have to hear.
Thank you, Karis. Thank you.
Do you want to do Claxton while you're sitting here?
All right.
I know we have our team waiting, but I don't think this one would be that long. So one of the items on the board's agenda is our recommendation to withdraw the Claxton item from the, um, special time meeting warrant. So I'd ask Karis to.
Miles, can you bring up the presentation? Because that is for some reason. Yes.
Do you want the memo?
There was a, maybe four slide, five slide PowerPoint presentation. Miles, I can share it on my screen if that's helpful.
Oh, that would be great. Thank you so much.
So maybe I'll start off by saying that Stacy is giving the same presentation or has given the same presentation to the Park and Recommissioners today um, on the current status of Claxton Field and, um, our recommendation collectively to postpone the funding until the May annual town meeting. Um, just a little background on, um, Claxton. This is a project that has been in DPW's project list for probably the better part of a decade. It initially was envisioned as a lighting retrofit project. And then as more people got interested in it and we really looked at the condition of our fields, became more and more involved as far as a redesign. Um, our initial plan was to redesign the field of Claxton. When we, um, started to look at some of the subsurface materials, as we looked at that design, we found that there were some materials in there that we did not want to disturb. So we ended up modifying, um, a design of Claxton Field. Um, we also, as part of this process, ended up identifying, um, that we really had all of our eggs in one basket when it came to softball. And that all of the fields were located, all the regulation fields were located at Claxton Field. And we had McLeod Field on our list of, um, areas to renovate at the DeFazio Park Complex. Primarily because, um, after the Field of Dreams project, we had reoccurring, um, sinkholes at that particular field because of an issue with perforation in the drainage pipe that was there. So, um, we decided that we would make a varsity level field, uh, for softball at McLeod, um, in DeFazio and take some of the pressure off of Claxton for softball. So that is currently underway. It's currently under construction and it's, um, anticipated to be completed by this spring to be used by the high school softball team. In the meantime, we were still continuing to pursue funding for Claxton. And we had, um, as part of this process, the intervention of DEP based on a resident complaint that required the town to do some pretty thorough investigation of the subsurface materials, um, at Claxton. As part of this investigation, um, it was determined that the town had a site that needed to be registered with the DEP because it had the presence of contaminated materials. And that, um, the town's original approach to dealing with these contaminated materials, putting in, um, a geo-textile fabric, um, cover was an appropriate, um, mitigation strategy. But it required us to do a lot more extensive testing than we had originally envisioned. And what we have found is that the contamination extends well beyond the bounds of the field and goes all the way to a stream that runs behind the facility. What that means is we have to do a lot more earthwork and a lot more mitigation as well as a conservation filing, um, on this particular parcel. And it is early as, let's say, a week and a half ago, DEP reached out to Weston and Sampson and put additional conditions on this parcel. And because of that, we did not feel comfortable moving forward with funding for this project at the special town meeting. Um, effectively, our initial plan was to put eighteen inches of topsoil on this parcel and, um, the DEP is now requiring twenty-four inches of topsoil. And it's not as simple because there's no drainage on this facility as adding in just more soil. We have to redesign the whole drainage profile um, as well as how the field then interacts with everything else. Because now we're lifting it up another six inches. And we just didn't feel comfortable that the numbers that we had right now were solid enough for us to go, um, to special town meeting. We've also devised a process and a program for us to try to get the field at the same, open at the same time. Our target date for opening had been May of twenty-five. And so we think we can do that while still postponing the funding process till the spring. What our intent is, is that we're going to continue filing with the Conservation Commission and working with DEP on finalizing our mitigation plan. And in May of this year, we're required to file a phase one, one-year, um, plan with DEP because it's been one year since the initial contamination was reported. And once that filing is done, which would have had to be done, whether or not we funded it, um, at the special, because we wouldn't have broken ground and completed the project, we have three years before we have to do anything on that site. So we'll be filing this report in May. We'll be going out to bid. We're hoping in April or March or April of this year. So we'll have all the bid documents ready to go. We'll put the project out to bid. And then we'll have a bid number in hand for town meeting, um, at this, at the annual town meeting. And I think because of the variables that are involved in this particular project, it will give us a level of comfort, knowing that we will have real bid numbers um, to go in front of the finance, uh, in front of finance committee and then in front of, um, town meeting. One of the other advantage or one of the other recommendations we're making is to do an emergency preamble on that particular request, which will allow a contractor or a contract to be signed and a contractor to start ordering materials and mobilize. One of the concerns that we generally have with funding a project in May is that because of the timeframe to get funds approved and contracts signed. And now, right now with the market, no one is ordering materials without having a contract in place and materials are often have quite significant lead times. It could almost delay things an entire season. But having that contract in place, um, when, or having the bid in place when we go to town meeting and having an emergency preamble should expedite that process and allow us to break ground in the, um, summer of twenty twenty-four, uh, with the goal of this being a three to four month project. And then, um, having the field open for the spring. So the goal is still to have this field open at the same time. But, um, a delay in the funding request. Um, a couple of other things just to note, um, in order to do the remediation, um, towards the riverbank, it requires a conservation permit. It will require taking, uh, taking down, um, a significant number of trees because those trees would not allow us to put in a barrier in place. And we have in that budget to replace as a two-for-one measure, the trees that need to be taken down as part of that project. Another cost increase that was incurred kind of on the positive side for this project is that we are adding irrigation to this project. Originally, when we found the contamination, we decided we weren't going to do irrigation because we didn't want to disrupt the soils. But now that we have to disrupt the soils in order to comply with DEP, we are going to put in an irrigation system, which adds additional costs on the front end, but should, um, preserve this field, um, further out as we have greater inconsistency and weather, uh, patterns. So, um, overall, we think we're going to have a better product. Um, and we'll have, this particular item will be closed out until we decide to do something else with this parcel with the DEP. Um, so it will help take that particular risk factor off of the town.
Jess, thank you. That was concise, lucid, to the point. And entirely done with that note.
Amazing.
You're amazing. That's amazing. Yeah, she has a piece of white paper. Very jealous. Okay, um, do you have any questions, comments?
I think. I, yeah, you're amazing. But I think Katie also has.
I think Katie, if you just want to put up the cost changes, because I think there's been a question about the increase in costs that we've seen. And really what we've talked about internally is this project has moved from a field redesign to a mitigation cleanup and earthworks project with like a nice field redesign on top of it. So, um, the vast majority of the increases that we see, and they are doubling of costs, are related to, um, the DEP regulations um, as part of this project.
And Park and Recreation did vote to delay.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Park and Recreation did take a vote to ask that we remove it and delay to May. They were meeting earlier. Lying on communications. Thank you.
Do we have to vote?
Yes, but at the end.
And does this mean that we, um, I, I completely understand and appreciate the.
And does this mean that we, I completely understand and appreciate the need to withdraw it at this point so that we can do this additional work? This means it will get worked into a funding plan for next year? The additional costs?
We're working on it. So Mr. Chair Pro Tem, we have, I think we can let Karas go. Our Health and Human Services team here to talk about the, both the Children's Hospital behavioral health funds and the opioid stabilization fund items. So thank you, Tim, and thank you, Tiffany, and thank you for waiting. Starting with.
Right.
Which one?
So it's okay, Mr. Chair. Sarah Shine joins us.
All friends.
So thank you very much, Mr. Chair. We have two warrant articles that we want to talk about. Two sources of funding that are non-operating budget dollars that we think will enable us to provide great services to the community. Sarah's going to present about youth health initiatives with Children's Hospital money and then Tiffany is going to present about opioid settlement funds.
You want me to start?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Um, so what our proposal is, is I think everyone is familiar, right now there's quite the mental health crisis in the area. And what we're trying to do is figure out how to best support the community given the current mental health crisis. So our thought is to use the funds for two additional positions. One would be a community-based clinician. So that person would be a mental health professional who would be based in the community. What we're hearing is that, I mean, we have a very large waitlist. So we're seeing higher acuity and higher numbers of people who need services. But we're also hearing that a lot of these community-based organizations are experiencing some of these mental health challenges within their facility and don't totally know how to manage it. So the person would be located at the library, at Park and Rec, maybe at the Housing Authority, maybe at the YMCA, depending on what the needs are. I've already talked to some of the library staff about how it's definitely a need there, just some of the other community organizations. We will try to figure out where the need really is. And they would provide onsite mental health counseling. They would be able to help support families with case management, help connect them to resources. Because the other thing that we're seeing is that it's not just a mental health need. So it's not just that somebody needs therapy, but they might need some additional services or have a variety of needs that a community-based person might be able to help connect them to. So that position would be the outreach clinician. And then the other position that we've talked about is a community training coordinator. So again, thinking that there are so many other organizations whose staff are managing kind of the mental health crisis. I know sometimes Park and Rec, their staff are struggling with how to manage some of the behaviors that they're seeing. So this community training coordinator would be able to train staff in managing the mental health crisis that we're in. So they would do community outreach, figure out what the needs are, train Park and Rec staff, train library staff, be really involved in our efforts to really train the community. Right now, there's a big push that we're doing for mental health first aid in training adults and actually doing a lot of training at the high school. So really trying to push that training initiative to get Needham to be a community that can really, as a whole, respond to mental health challenges when they're seen. So those are the thoughts of briefly, those two positions.
Great.
And you did collaborate with multiple department heads to think through, Katie led it, but multiple department heads to think through what their needs were, what would be most beneficial.
This seems to do the trick.
Yeah.
Permanent positions or how long this is for?
Here's my, I'll weigh in on that. So, you know, we don't like to fund positions through warrant articles. But we, we have to be very careful of this money to make sure that it goes only to these youth and behavioral health. So that's why we wanted to, we thought about putting them in the budget and then funding them with this appropriation. But we really have to track every dollar to make sure that it goes only to this. So assuming that we continue to get our $200,000 a year from, from the community host agreement, which we should, they would stay. Otherwise, you know, they wouldn't. So it is, it is our goal to keep them, but they really are tied to the children's funding at this point, so.
In the children's funding, we got $200,000 at the building permit. $200,000 will be provided at 50% construction and then the next one should be, I think.
Annually.
Annually after, on July 1st, after the extra deputy Watkins. So we have, basically, we will have $400,000 in hand and we will ask for that and that will cover both roles for two years.
We also said they got diesel tank today, so. Any questions?
Yeah, I do. Thank you for putting this together. I I think that this is a real problem and it's really as a parent and as a resident, gives me a lot of peace of mind that you're constantly working in the background to, to help the community. My question is just, what is mental first aid?
Mental health first aid. So there are various versions of it, but, so the adult version is training adults how to respond to other adults that might be experiencing mental health challenge. Youth mental health first aid, which is one of the classes we run, we're training adults how to respond to youth that might be experiencing mental health challenge. So it's a, there's about two hours of pre-work, five and a half hours of in-person or virtual class. And we really go through recognizing signs and symptoms of mental health, what to do in various situations. We go over crisis and non-crisis scenarios and how to help connect that young person to a mental health professional if needed.
And how are people accessing these classes?
So we're, there's a couple of people under HHS, actually myself and Karen Shannon, who's in the room, that train the classes. So we put it out to the community and anyone can sign up for those classes. And then the biggest initiative that we're going to do this year, there's a teen version. So it's teaching, teaching teens how to respond to peers that might be experiencing mental health challenge. The difficulty with that model is that you have to train an entire class. So we have to train like the entire 10th grade, which is it's four and a half hours of in-person work. You, you can only do it a certain number of days per week. And then you have to do the 20 classes to cover the whole 10th grade, but we're going to make that happen this year with the hope that in three years, three-fourths of the high school will be trained on the model.
Which is, I think Sarah said it, but that's a huge push and a big lift for a small team, but.
But we think it'll make a difference. I think teens mostly talk to teens. They also sometimes talks to adults. But I think that the initiative of having other teens trained will be huge.
Thank you.
I just want to say I'm very supportive of this. As a former teacher at the high school, I know how great is the need. And, you know, I think you guys have been very creative and, you know, how to, how to deploy these resources. My only question on the finances is if it's $200,000 flat every year, you know, presumably, I mean, I know we're only talking about two years, but this, this is supposed to continue in the future, right? But it won't grow with any inflation, right? Is this just a flat? So we'll have to.
Have to find a way.
Deal with that, I guess, in the.
I think Sarah's memo talked about projections hiring at the very top of the pay scale. That gives us flexibility, although there's no guarantee we would choose to hire someone at the very top of the pay scale unless they were very experienced.
Okay, so there's a little bit of room there.
There is some room for it to grow. I think long-term, your point is still correct that the salaries will, you know, in a decade, for example, probably exceed what we're getting.
Yeah.
I think we can try to save money where we can, but that would potentially involve us thinking in the future, you know, maybe there has been enough training provided that we could survive with a half-time trainer and a full-time community clinician. Or we, you know, have to sort of reevaluate. So we would have to, to think about that, but I think the problem would be, you know, five or 10 years down the line.
It would be really helpful too to have some data, which we will have in terms and, and our great survey work that we do. If we see the impact, I'm sure we can make a case for continued.
Julie, how's the board?
The board is great.
They miss you.
You know, we're, we're so pleased with how this park is run and all the programs and all the support that they're giving to the community. But I want to say the board is in complete support of this and feels like it would be a great thing for the town as a whole.
Yeah, just to add, it is unusual that a town provides mental health care for adolescents free of charge, which is astounding. But, you know, because if one death, one suicide will tear apart the community. So it's my work. Thank you. We have next. Tiffany. I'm sorry, one question. Mary Ann, did you have a question, comment?
I'm fine so far. Thank you.
All right. So we are here to discuss the opioid stabilization fund plan for fiscal year '24 and potentially the next five years based off of the information we received. So what we're looking to do is request about $145,000 of the $217,000 that was put into the opioid stabilization fund in the spring for use of hiring contractors, some sandboxes and then a peer recovery coach. So I'll kind of break that down a little bit more. $90,000 will go to hiring contractors to do community engagement around opioids and how to best use this funding money that we will receive over the next 15 years. And the goal with that will be to get not just public health thoughts on who we should contact, but outside third-party contacting people. So it's not led into what we think, but more led into what the community really thinks should be used for the opioid funds. They'll work with stakeholders. They'll work with key informant interviews. They'll do a community forum or, or two, depending on what the outcome is, to kind of really engage the community and reach all aspects and make it as inclusive as possible. So that's one. This could be one or two contractors looking to do the second portion would be a five-year strategic plan based off of some of that information and how we would best utilize that opioid funding for the next five years as a projection, including a what is it called? Program evaluation, thank you, component to that so that we can really understand how to review it every year and make sure this is really working for what the community needs. So that would be 90,000 of the 145. Another smaller portion would be 3,000 for sandboxes. As you can see in the Exhibit A in the memo, that is just boxes that we hope to provide to put near our AEDs throughout some of the town buildings and other places. This will get us close to 10 or 11 sandboxes. That allows us to put Narcan into the box. They are just locked with a little key on top that anybody can access and take out. That then they can use in emergency as well as grab the AED at the same time and go take care of the emergency concerning whether or not it has opioids in it. They at least have a Narcan on hand with that process. And then the other 52,000 would be to hire a peer recovery coach. We have actually already been working on this process in the public health department in trying to get a staff member trained as a peer recovery coach. And what we hope to do with peer recovery coach is to outreach to communities, outreach to local groups that work with persons with substance use and really have that connection that then allows us to be able to provide them connections to their needed services. It will help them to develop a personal plan of what they will do in their recovery or what things will look like. It will give them personal relationship of somebody who has peer experience in their own recovery as to how and best to support them throughout this process. And with all of these, the last two, the sandboxes and the peer recovery culture, really some of the key things that are required in the abatement agreement through the state of Massachusetts. So it's connecting needed services for those in substance use and providing harm reduction skills and connections treatment. So that is the goal of this.
Questions, comments?
Mr. Chair, first question is with the 90,000 with the community engagement, how, like, who is your target audience? How are you going to try to bring them in? And then after that, what are some of the options? You know, of where we might go depending on community input?
Target audience for who the contractors will.
No, no. Who, is it everyone in the community? Are you trying to get families who have suffered with this? Are you like, what's your target audience and how, how do you, how do you plan to engage those people?
So I think the goal is definitely to get those that are having current lived experience and past experience thought and process through this. So we will hope to connect with those. We are working already on a key stakeholder list of people who these people could contact to help provide that. The state is also really working BSAS, which is the Bureau of Substance Abuse Services, has contracted with JSI, Johnson &amp; O, Incorporated, to provide technical services to towns to then reach out to those groups within communities so that then we can really get connected to who needs it, who has knowledge, who can do what. And then I think at the end of one portion of it will be to really take this to the entire town, have a community forum, discuss what has been found throughout all the different groups that we've been able to contact.
And then the follow-on, what are, what are, like, obviously we want to get community input, but is there sort of a menu of options of things where we might want to go?
Yes. So I may ask a little bit of Tim's help on this because I was out on leave when it was discussed more at the Springtown meeting. We had our thoughts on how we should spend this money and what we thought it might best service, but the understanding was is that we really want to know what the community wanted more than what our thoughts are. So yes, we always have thoughts, especially the sandbox is the recovery coaching. But making that decision on what this money should be spent, we don't feel like should be just us, HHS, or the town employees. It really should be the community's choice on how the process should go. So there's not going to necessarily be a roadmap to where we want them to lead. There's just going to be an end result that we then hope will work for Needham and its residents.
But there are some parameters. So the state strongly recommends the public engagement process we talked about and they really want you to talk to families that have been impacted by addiction. They want to talk to about people that are in recovery, they want you to talk to people who are in recovery and people who are potentially actively still using substances. There are six or seven sort of broad program areas they talk about. And so mental health promotion is one of them, substance use prevention, harm reduction or harm mitigation, access to treatment and recovery.
Connections to care and services.
Connections to care and services. So there's, there's sort of six or seven broad pots that the money could be spent on. And I think, you know, it'd be important for us to understand the community. Is the community very invested in harm reduction approaches or do they really prefer the prevention? I guess my own preference would be that we try to do a little bit of a couple of different things. I will say we are fortunate to have town funding to do a lot of substance use prevention activity. Historically, that funding hasn't been used and historically we haven't necessarily made strong connections into referral to care and recovery and supporting people in the recovery process. And this feels like a great opportunity to try to develop a capacity to help support those members of the community that, that need that.
So it's same with the hospital money, like Kate was saying, there are very specifics and it mostly has to be spent on opioids. It can't necessarily be spent on substance use. And then the only kind of broader aspects to the abatement agreement is with youth. And you can use it on prevention for youth. So there's, yeah, there are very specifics on what couldn't, couldn't be done.
I guess I, this is really comprehensive and very interesting. I'm not super familiar with this problem myself. Can you just briefly discuss like how, how broad this issue is in Needham specifically?
Sure. So every year for the past, I'm going to have Karen correct me if I'm wrong, so feel free to shout out. But every year for the past three or four years, we've had two to three deaths related to opioids within Needham. We, Needham Public Health, Needham Youth, HHS, works with CCIT, our Community Crisis Intervention Team. We discuss this at every monthly meeting that we have. The fire and police are often using Narcan during their calls. I don't have direct numbers on that process yet. That's part of our work as well, but it's more widespread than thought of. And one death is one death too many. When it comes to it, I will tell you that we have been training and have been opening Narcan trainings in the public health department for anybody in the community and businesses that want to come. And in August, we trained 40 people and a lot of the feedback we got was they just want to be prepared. So the understanding is out there in the community. So the understanding is out there in the community to a point that this could happen to anybody and not knowing the difference of one medication with and one medication without, things that are laced, things that aren't, different kinds of things like that. So I think it's more widespread than our data shows us because we don't have a comprehensive data system. But yeah, I would say about two or three every year we have a death related to opioids.
And police and fire generally, and Karen can correct me if I'm wrong, administer Narcan between one and two dozen, so reverse one to two dozen overdoses a year. Not necessarily always Needham residents. The town does have the highway and often Police Chief will tell you there's some amount of use that happens off of the highway. You know, the data we have from the Midwest Adolescent Health Survey also tells us that, you know, and I'm going to get the exact number wrong, but something like 1% of Needham high school students have tried heroin. And if you do the math on how many tried it, that's 23 or 25 students. And that's pretty alarming when you think about Needham high school students using heroin. So we are fortunate in Needham that we're not in the position of some communities where they're having, you know, three figures worth of deaths every year. But we do think it makes an impact. And obviously, certainly any death would impact a family tremendously.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. And I think that's, that's one of the reasons that I ask is that I think there are lots of communities, unfortunately, that have a very visible problem. And just because ours is maybe a little less visible doesn't mean it doesn't exist. But it does mean that there are lots of people who are unfamiliar with it. So just hearing about it is very helpful. Thank you.
Mary Ann, any thoughts?
Um, no, I don't have any thoughts particular to this. I mean, these are all important pieces of work to do. The one thought that I was thinking about, and I haven't gone to find it, is the fentanyl walk is coming up in town. It seems like it might be worthwhile to mention if people were interested in understanding and participating in that, if somebody has that data or that info.
Thank you. I think it's amazing that Narcan, making that available. I think that's brilliant. I understand this and so was an absence reflex. Are we just encouraging it or we don't see it, we don't have it? Are we, but we're not. Time for tisk, tisking, tisking someone who's having an overdose is not while they were overdosing. And I love that the peer, peer recovery coach, that's, that's a great part of the mission. And what makes Needham so special, it's really good that we take care of. So thank you. So this is great. This is exciting. Thank you so much.
I can see Katie has her hand up. I'm hoping she might have the answer to my question.
Mary Ann, I'm sorry I missed your question, but, um, sorry, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to chime in to say, as was mentioned with the children's youth health money and the opioid money, this is ongoing revenue that's going to keep coming to the town. And I just wanted to make it clear that as that revenue comes in, we'll have to continue going back to town meeting to appropriate it over time. And so we'll have a chance to update the board and the public what the work has been done, if anything needs to pivot moving forward. The opioid money is for the next 15 years. So these are long-term strategies that we're getting in place now.
Thank you. Thank you guys. Thanks so much. Good night.
Thank you.
The fentanyl event is on Sunday, October 15th. Here in the community, we volunteer to place door hangers, door-to-door at residences to let them know about the fentanyl crisis. Since the number one cause for death between people 18 to 45 years old are overdose.
Thank you.
You are on mic, so I'm just going to repeat it from cable. When is that?
Sunday, October 15th.
Oh, Sunday, October 15th. Thanks. Thank you. All right, so we do have an agenda, but I think we're now square.
The, to the next item is closing the warrant. We're still on the warrant. Just that we went over the children's article, the opioid article, Claxton article. We'll have a presentation on the opt-in specialized code. We'll have the public hearing on just October 10th. Everything else generally straightforward. I just wanted to note, we've included in the warrant now the noncriminal disposition article. We've been over it several times. I wanted to note after comments from the board that both Section 3.14 and 3.15 are now permissive. So this was a concern. So the select board may prohibit the use of motorized recreational vehicles or devices on sidewalks. There was some concern about what children and hoverboards, and we don't know yet. And then the same on the sidewalks, the select board may prohibit bicycles on sidewalks in the square in Needham Heights. So that allows us to have them in there, have the fine, and then have more conversation about what we actually want to do. And we've referred, we've referred that one at least to traffic safety and mobility.
Mr. Chair, I have one question. Sorry, but every time I look at this, I just, I have a question about this 3.1.7. Or I guess it has a new number, but in any case, it's dealing in secondhand merchandise. There are a lot of forums in which people deal in secondhand merchandise, whether that's like a Facebook Marketplace or a whatever. I mean, do we need to?
3.1.7.
Do you worry about that? Is that an issue?
Just trying to find.
What number are we on? I'm sorry.
3.1.7 on the chart.
Right, dealing in secondhand merchandise.
I mean.
That's deleted, right?
No, no, it's renumbered. I just, I just want to make sure that, I don't know. There's a, there are a lot of forums where people deal in secondhand merchandise. I just, I'm not sure what this is specifically regarding. So I just wanted to ask about it.
Generally speaking, pawn shops, let me pull.
Second-hand goods stores need license.
Right, things that we've licensed.
Okay, so we don't worry about individuals selling secondhand merchandise.
This is not intended to cover Facebook Marketplace.
Okay.
But it's an interesting question that we will do more research on.
Yeah.
This is the existing, we have secondhand clothing stores down the street that have to have annual licenses from the town. And that's making sure they're not operating without the appropriate license. So we'll do a little more research on that one.
Okay.
It's a great.
Just, yeah.
We did, we're actually unclear how that would be different than any other, like operating any other retail establishment. I think it's when you're doing it as a business. But again, there are a lot of questions.
If we're going to be wonky, like.
There are a lot of questions about e-commerce and the gig economy, right? We had a lot of conversation about operating a taxi without a permit. And we decided that we're not regulating a ride chair and that they aren't, because we are required to regulate taxis. So it's, it's the same concept, but it's an interesting point. More on that. Thank you. Other than that, I believe that the board could vote to close the warrant subject to minor technical corrections.
Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that the board vote to close the warrant for the October 30th, 2023 special town meeting subject to minor technical corrections to be made by the town manager, town council, and bond council. Second.
Okay, we got a vote. Our roll call, Mary Ann?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Heidi?
Aye.
And I vote yes.
The next item, Mr. Chair, is to review the select board licensing fee schedule. Thank you very much. Do you have it memorized?
I do, as there are no changes, Mr. Chair. Last year, if you recall, certain license fees went up back to the pre-pandemic levels, specifically for alcohol licenses, which were halved. Restaurants, that is, and those were brought up by this board last year back to where they were. And now we are not recommending any changes at this time to any of the licenses listed here. And this would be back before this board next meeting for a vote.
Okay.
Excellent.
Any questions?
Are you feeling underworked? This is not your usual gig.
Thank you, Miles.
Thank you, Ma.
Thank you.
Just one more item, Mr. Chair. I have a couple of items under the town managers' report. I just, I wanted to note that sometimes we feel overwhelmed by the work, but this meeting in particular just shows how amazing a community you are, isn't it? The things that we're, we're doing, we're on the cutting edge and how much people care about it. You might not agree on where the crosswalk might go, but everybody's so dedicated to making improvements and seeing that. We don't see the human services people all that much. And they're just, they're really doing amazing work. So I thought I would note that. I know you agree.
They're firing all pistols.
That's amazing. Two items. We, I, the town applied for a community planning early action grant to help us with our home work and our DHDD, MBTA, EOLH, HLC community housing. And we, we were notified a while back, but now we're allowed to tell people about it. So we got a $70,000 grant, which is the most that they awarded to any community. That's the highest amount that they awarded. So we feel good about that and we're so grateful that that was available to us from our partners in the state. And then another item that I think you would find interesting. We had a US passport audit, which is something that happens annually. And we are an acceptance facility and their acceptance facility oversight has to come out and do this audit. And they came and Louise and Emily were here and they got all the questions right. And inspection, inspection revealed that both agents were extremely knowledgeable on passport acceptance and that the facility is following all information security requirements, which is really exciting. They thanked us for our dedication. And they noticed that we issued 376 passports in FY22, which is 117.14% increase from FY21. So they are, it's amazing. There's a couple a day, I would say, you know, that, and that people really love it, that they can come here and they find out and they tell their friends. So anybody who wants to make a passport appointment can call up and do so. So it's great. And the staff are evidently very good at.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you. And congratulations.
Yes. You're almost done. One more. Two more. First one is board discussion on goal setting.
Okay, right. I'm trying, here we go. All right, you have a fiscal year 2024, 25 goals and initiatives. You want to talk about it?
I think we went over the items and the objectives and the work plans at your last meeting. I know you've received some communications with respect to the rail trail and, you know, hoping to prioritize that. What the board may do is, you know, you could ask us to amend it or you could perhaps take it up at your mid-year retreat, which you usually have sometime in December or January. So that, that for the board's consideration, which way to go on that. It'll probably be January.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I have a question about that. I think it's very important to prioritize the rail trail. I note that on our consent agenda tonight, we appointed James Goldstein to the Mobility Committee, which I think is a really good appointment given his, his position on the rail trail committee. And I just wanted to ask, you know, he noted when he came last session to speak with us that the feasibility study is already several years old. And I just wanted to ask a question about the process. If we, if we don't move this up and if we do wait a while to take this up, how old can a feasibility study be before it has to be repeated? Because, you know.
The, the cost estimate is already, we'd have to go out and get a new cost estimate. The feasibility work that would show the geotechnical areas, the, the opportunities for getting up off of High Rock Street through the tunnel, the work on, the work with the MBTA, I mean, it depends on administration at the MBTA. But the paths out, the, the difficulties on which side you have it and which side has the sidewalk, those are all, those are all constant, you know, unless we change the, the geometry on Chester Street at the railroad bridge. But the cost estimate is already impossibly out of date. I mean, this, this study was done practically pre-pandemic, so.
Well, I guess rather than, rather than prioritizing this portion of the rail trail, it would be my, it would be my hope that we could maybe prioritize reconvening with Dover to see if, if there's a way to work out the situation so that the rail trail could move from Dover into Needham for, you know, the, the people could move through the town. I think that would be, having that element would really make having the rest of the rail trail work much better. So I'd like to suggest that we maybe prioritize that rather than actually moving forward with this portion of the rail trail.
It's my, if I may, it's, it's, it's my sense and the sense of public works that if we have a Medfield Dover connection all the way to Newton and we have a partnership with the state, with DCR, that, you know, where we could access funds, that, that may be a way to get the whole thing moving. But that, yes, I mean, the amenity that we have now in some ways is an attractive nuisance. Because there's not, just not enough volume. So we really want to increase that. And I think access to Dover and access to the junction either, you know, would be helpful. But I, I agree and we can start that piece.
Yeah, and maybe we can ask the mobility committee to take that on.
So, so can I just say that I actually already had a conversation about this with James when I spoke to him? As I had indicated, I would do to him before our last meeting, that I would speak to him after that meeting to talk about both of those that we thought it was important that this be a piece of, the overall mobility planning for the town and that we give the committee a chance to take a look at it under that light and that given the work that we're doing to prioritize the many mobility needs that we have in town, that a focus on Dover would be beneficial because it would really create much more usage of that trail than we're seeing right now, which would make it a more compelling use of town funds. Because right now, you know, even under the, the old numbers that we have, you're looking at the rail trail plus the piece on the, on the street as being about $3 million. You know, it's a lot of money for a relatively low-use item. So we need to get some more volume there. I just comment that there might be a synergy between the connection to Dover and the connection to the junction. I mean, I don't know how many commuters we would ever have, but the, the people who use the junction and stop, a lot of those people are from Dover. You know, so there, there could be, you know, some synergy there.
Yeah, they could ride the horses. I'm sorry. No, they take bikes, of course. Yeah, I guess I think this is a priority to where the conversation will have. Okay. All right, with that, do you want to, does anyone want to suggest a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that the select board vote to adopt its goal statement for fiscal year 2024, 25.
Second.
Okay, let's take a vote. We're going to do a by-roll call. Mary Ann?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Heidi?
Aye.
And I vote yes. Next. The ADL letter, open letter to combat antisemitism and fight hate for good. Issues that become a stigma toward the ADL open letter. Do you guys read the materials? Any thoughts, comments?
So this was a, this was a, this is a petition by the ADL Anti-Defamation League regarding increase in antisemitic acts and speech. And I received this personally, I think you did as well, from a number of And, um, I perceived this personally, I, I think you did as well, from a number of residents who were concerned about the issue. And, um, so we just wanted to bring it here to the select board to discuss. Um, I think this is, uh, certainly a, a place where the select board can weigh in on the side of good. And, and I support doing it. Um, whether this is an issue in Needham or in Massachusetts or across our country, I feel like, um, town leaderships should weigh in on issues like this and I, and I hope that we will.
And yeah, I would just add that, yeah, several constituents wrote to me about this and, you know, I could have signed this as an individual, but it's so much more powerful if the board will take a vote on it. And I will say that we have had incidents in Needham.
Yeah.
And, um, I think it's important for us to take a clear stand on this issue.
Thank you. I, I agree, um, Anish, you want to be proactive? You know, so I'm, oh, for this is, I think this is a good idea. So is anyone who wants to make a motion?
Uh, I move that the board vote to become, oh.
I was just gonna make a motion, given, given where we are, so.
Oh, oh.
Go ahead, Kathy, go ahead, Kathy, make the motion. You're in the room.
Okay, um, I move that the board vote to become a signatory to the ADL open letter to combat antisemitism and fight hate for good.
Second.
Okay, great. Um, any other discussion?
Yeah, I just, um, if I may, I'd just like to say thank you to the residents who sent this along. I, although I'm, I guess I'm a member of the ADL, um, but I hadn't seen this myself. And so I appreciate when the public brings things like this to our attention, um, and, uh, helps us to take steps in the right direction, action. So thank you.
Okay, we're gonna do a roll call vote. Mary Ann?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Heidi?
Aye.
And I vote yes. Thank you.
I'm counting every time to say yes.
Okay.
Um, may I just, uh, interrupt for one second? Uh, just having, just taking care of that order of business, I just wanted to, um, say to Needham's Jewish community and anyone else who participates and observes, um, that, that today, um, having just come to the end of the Jewish High Holy Days, I just wanted to wish our Needham Jewish community in particular, uh, Happy New Year. I hope you had a, um, meaningful Yom Kippur. And, um, just to, just to note, especially as we take a stand against antisemitism, that, um, that we have a thriving Jewish community and, and, um, it's appreciated.
Thank you, Heidi. Okay, committee reports. Are there any? My hone is getting together on the eighth. We're getting our numbers back, right? October eighth? Yeah, checked it.
But okay, yes.
And then. Kathy, Mary Ann, anything?
Nope, nothing today.
Okay. Well, I'd hate to adjourn so early, so.
You, you can just say what you.
Oh, yes.
I don't have to translate.
Yes.
So, um, the select board does have one seat on the Needham branding and town sale committee that it has yet to designate who will serve on that. I know there was a lot of interest and.
Believe that was gonna be you, Kevin, right?
Just wanted to confirm that before putting on your next agenda.
Yeah, all right, I'll do it.
It was your idea. Sometimes you're on your ideas.
That's a hard lesson to learn. All right. Um, if there's nothing else.
Oh, there is one other thing.
Nice job tonight.
Yes, it's, it's, we miss you, Mary Ann, but.
Thank you, Kevin.
Capable hands, we've made it through the evening.
That's because I told him early that I wasn't going to be there tonight, so he got all his stomach bugs out of the way.
This is not as easy as Mary Ann makes it look. Thank you, Mary Ann. We're always gonna be chair. Small plan. All right, uh, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second, second.
All right, we'll do it by roll call. Mary Ann?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Heidi?
Aye.
And I vote yes. All right.